14, 2022, pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E. Members of Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's YouTube channel at HTTPS www.youtube.com/dailycityvideomeetings or the city's agenda website at HTTPS www.dailycity.org/Agendas or on local Channel 27 on Comcast. Okay. Now, we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of things. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, I think we're ready for roll call.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod?
Present, thank you. Um, okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 23, 2022?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
First and second by Councilor Pamela Di Giovanni. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to approval of agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. All right, first by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and a second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to consent agenda. Are there any items that would like to be pulled and be discussed?
Mr. Mayor, if I can pull item number three?
Okay. Are there any other items that would like to be pulled?
With the exception of item number three, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. All right. Item number three, authorizing allocation of home, home ARP and PLHA funds for 72 units of affordable housing at 493 Eastmore.
Good evening, Mayor, can you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, may I share screen? Before you tonight is a request to approve $5.2 million in funding for the affordable housing development proposed at 493 Eastmore. The developer of this property is the Core Companies, a qualified and experienced affordable housing developer. They have developed over 5,000 housing units across 45 projects in San Mateo County and the South Bay. This includes a total of 2,000 affordable units. This transit-oriented development will be located on a currently vacant lot located at Eastmore and Sullivan. The site is about half a mile from the Colma Bart Station. The project received its development entitlements from the city in February of 2020. It will provide 72 units, of which 35 will be studios and 36 one bedrooms. 100% of the units will be affordable and subject to a 55-year deed restriction. And here is a photo showing an architect's rendering of the project. The project will target households with incomes at or below 60% AMI with several units affordable to households with incomes as far down as 20 and 30% AMI, which is extremely low income. For illustration purposes, 60% AMI would be about $90,000 a year for a household of two. And 30% AMI would be about $45,000 for a household of two. This is considered extremely low income, a category that has been prioritized as a critical need in San Mateo County. In July of 2020, the city council approved an allocation of $1.3 million in Daily City Housing Trust Funds for this project. Those funds were represented as matching funds under an application submitted by the San Mateo Hart to the state Housing Trust Fund Program. That application was successful and resulted in an additional $1.3 million for the project. In September of 2021, the Core Companies submitted a letter to the city requesting additional financial assistance for the project. This request was submitted in advance of deadlines for various state public financing program applications. Here is a slide showing the costs and potential revenues associated with the 493 Eastmore development. This financial plan is very typical for affordable housing projects in the Bay Area where multiple funding sources are typically required to completely finance a project. And as you can see on the slide, the developer has proposed $5.2 million in funding from Daily City. This is also typical. The local jurisdiction portion of an affordable housing funding stack is commonly 10 to 20% of the total or even higher when the project envisions targeting extremely low incomes like this project. Funding from the city will make the developers' application to various state programs more competitive and ensure the overall financial feasibility of the project. Let's take a look at the funding staff is recommending the council allocate to the project. First, we have home funds. Staff is recommending $1,128,804 in home funds. These are funds the city receives on an annual basis, typically around $300,000 per year, which is not really enough to make a meaningful investment in a project. So we usually try to accumulate three or four years' worth and then invest. Next, $1,199,502 in home ARP funds. This is a one-time allocation the city received under the America Rescue Plan, which was passed by Congress in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. Next is PLHA funds or permanent local housing allocation, and staff is recommending $2,917,380. This is a relatively new funding source from which, from the state where the city will be getting an annual allocation. Between these three sources, staff is recommending a total of $5,245,686. And staff is recommending that these funds are offered as conditional commitments that would be subject to required all of the federal requirements like environmental review and project underwriting. To summarize, staff is recommending that the city allocate a total of $5,245,686 to the project at 493 Eastmore. The proposed funding sources have expenditure deadlines that we are approaching, and there are not other projects in the pipeline that will be ready to utilize these funds in the next year or so. Funding from the city will increase the likelihood of a developer's success in obtaining funding from various state public financing programs whose deadlines are, whose application deadlines are approaching, ensure the project's overall financial feasibility, enable the project to move forward as quickly as possible towards construction and the delivery of greatly needed affordable housing units in Daily City. And with that, I'm available to answer questions you might have. I believe we also have Carl Hurtel, a representative from the Core Companies, on the call as well.
Thank you so much, Betsy. I see a few of my colleagues would like to speak, let's go with Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Sobel, for that extensive explanation on where we're at today in regards to this project. I am fully excited to see that we're moving along as we know that this has been something since, on, on, on the pipeline since 2020. And it's crucial to have projects like this and wanted to be able to share with the public the, the, the AMI levels that this project will bring forth. So, Betsy, I think that was wonderful that you were able to share exactly what the income levels are for this type of project and really the directive of our Housing Trust Funds and, and in which it should be allocated to really, you know, a lower AMI level. And I'm excited to see this move forward. I know that you've done a lot of hard work, Ms. Sobel and your team. I'm, I'm happy to sit on Affordable Housing Committee and see this keep moving along. As you mentioned, it's the only one in the pipeline that we could allocate to, but it's also the very crucial location. I mean, I think we've seen that corner, definitely a lot could be used for something than just an empty lot right there on Eastmore. And so, in full support of it, I, I hope that all the allocations otherwise would be received and if they were to try to get other fundings. I'm glad that us, as a city of Daily City, I know it's 5 million, it's, I wish we could do more, but it's, it's what we can do here as a city of Daily City, showing really that we prioritize and want to build more affordable housing opportunities with, within our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to echo and say, Ms. Sobel and the representative from Core Companies, is he here, or you said?
Yes.
I remember being on planning and one of, hi, how are you?
Hi.
It's really happening, right? It's really happening. I was on planning at the time, yes. Bravo to you, and thank you for all the partners, I'd like to thank Heart as well. And then I think it's great that, you know, we try to save that money when you came back. We know that it's well allocated for this project and hope you remember us for future projects because I think we're doing the housing element now and I think a critical need, like Ms. Sobel was saying, for this, this type of income. And I remember that design and it's still just as beautiful as was the very first day with the bicycle. I remember that as well and, and it's really going to make a big difference, especially on that corner and, and just the beginning, I hope, having a relationship with you at the Core Companies and working with Sobel and our, and our team at the city and Ms. Mothershead as well. And very exciting, and we don't have to make sure that we are having to push out people in our city because I see so many days where there are moving vans coming and where people cannot afford to live. And it really, really takes our diversity, what we, that is one of the biggest pride things to me. That is what makes Daily City and them being forced out. So, the affordability aspect, real affordability. So, thank you so much and really exciting and look forward to the groundbreaking. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're very excited about, yeah, nice to see you, we're very excited about the project and we appreciate the city's, you know, continued support of the project. So, we're looking forward to getting it underway, so.
Yeah, great, thank you, thank you, Betsy. Thank you, Mayor.
You, thank you, Councilmember about Giovanni, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Core Properties, thank you to, in echoing, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and all of those who were involved in what came to fruition today, which we're about to make a decision on. Thank you, Betsy, and again, Councilmember D. Giovanni for making mention that one of those partners is Heart, who have submitted an application which enabled it to be successful and as a result, additional funding that has come in. I am so proud to be part of the Board of Directors of Heart through the appointment through Council of Cities and it gives me great pleasure to say, wow, this is something sorely needed in Daily City. So, I'd like to thank everyone involved, including Ms. Sobel and her staff for helping to work with Heart to find these extra funds other than what we are giving today and to make this project come to light, so thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. I want to echo my colleagues as well. I don't have to reiterate how much we need affordable housing. But thank you, Betsy, to our staff, thank you to Core Properties. I wish we could do more, but like what Councilmember Justin Manalo said, you know, this is what we have and this is what we can give. And I'm very, very grateful that we can provide very affordable housing at a prime location, location close to Bart. I think it's, it's such, it's, it's very, very needed and I'm very grateful that we're able to support this project. So, thank you. So.
But that's, with that said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number three.
I don't. All right, we have a, we have a first by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and a second by Councilmember Justin Manalo. So, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, thank you for Betsy and her staff at Core for coming in today and having this project roll through, okay.
Yeah, thank you again for your support for Mayor and, and the council, and the council as well, so it's definitely appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. All right. All right, so we skip down to public hearings, agenda item number 14, National Pollution, Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Local Storm Water Program Regulatory Fee. And we have Sibley, Caius, and Richard Chu.
Sobelli, we're not hearing you. You on?
I can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I am not sure if we, before I present this item, if we need to open up the public hearing. Soleil Lani, if you can confirm if this will be done after I present or before I present?
It'll be after.
Thank you. Okay, so again, the item that we are bringing before you, it's a recommendation for city council to adopt a resolution to maintain the existing National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Regulatory Fees, also known as MPDES. The funds collected are used for different activities related to the state mandated stormwater management plan. And also, the second part of the resolution, it would be to authorize city manager to enter into a contract with the county of San Mateo for the collection of the MPDES fees. A little bit of a background, back in November 2015, the Water Board issued a consolidated Bay Area Municipal Regional Stormwater Permit. It went into effect January 1, 2016. The MRP or the Municipal Regional Stormwater Permit covers an array of activities that each agency is responsible for. All the activities that we are discussing under this permit are related to the stormwater. Now, the, you know, staff is, has already put in place a set of activities that will be funded with the fees that are being collected, you know, from MPDES. Back in 2000, I'm sorry, in 1995, there was a ordinance that was passed by city council and part of the, a portion of the fees is being used specifically for some of the activities that are listed in the MRP and also the San Mateo County Water Pollution Prevention Program. So far, Public Works estimates that the amount that will be collected for the next fiscal year 2023 will be at about $508,856. Now, these expenses are derived from personnel, equipment, and inspection services that are covered under this program. In the staff report, you will see the, the list of the fees that are being collected and this is for each parcel. Now, keep in mind that these fees have not been raised in the past 26 years, so they stay the same as the ones that were adopted in 1995. We expected that the fees that we will be collecting will be approximately $465,000. And as I mentioned earlier, the expenses is going to be about $508,000. So, you know, what we are collecting at this time is not enough to cover all the expenses for the activities that are related to MPDES. It is recommended that in the future, you know, we look into raising these fees, but that's a whole different process that we would have to go through in order for us to be able to do that. So, Public Works is recommending the readoption of the existing MPDES regulatory fee and authorized city manager to go into a contract so that, with a county assessor to collect the fees on behalf of Daily City and that will be placed on the property owner's backfield. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sobelli, thank you, Richard Chu. Before we open up for public hearing, are there any comments from my colleagues or questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number 14, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. No hands raised near.
Thank you, Leilani. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions from my colleague before go for a roll call vote? All right. Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make a motion.
And I'll go ahead and second. All right. So, Ms. City Clerk, can we have a roll call vote brief?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number 15, Communications, Adoption of Comprehensive Operating and Capital Budgets for Fiscal Year 2023. And we have Mr. Nevin and Mr. Chu.
Good evening, Dr. Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, staff is recommending adoption of the Comprehensive Operating and Capital Budgets for Fiscal Year 2023. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and ongoing economic uncertainties, the city switched to a one-year budget cycle for in fiscal year 2021. Staff has continued to monitor and evaluate the economic climate and has opted to continue developing one-year comprehensive operating and capital budgets for adoption for fiscal year 2023. The budget presented for your consideration and adoption was shown to council during the May 23, 2022 council meeting. The fiscal year 2023 proposed operating budget was developed by carefully reviewing revenues and expenditures in previous and current fiscal years to forecast the needs of all departments in fiscal year 2023. Additionally, all city departments are committed to reducing operating expenditures while the city recovers from pandemic-related budget impacts. Departmental budget increases have been minimized to a great extent and expenditure reduction measures have already reduced the projected deficit for this fiscal year, fiscal year 2022. The overall general fund revenue total for fiscal year 2023 is recommended to be $117.7 million and the overall general fund expenditures is recommended to be 120, almost $120.3 million. This equates to a budgeted general fund deficit of just over $2.5 million. The total revenue for the non-general funds is recommended at $115.4 million and the total non-general fund expenditure budget is recommended to be $115.2 million. The overall citywide revenue budget is recommended to be $233 million and the citywide expenditure budget is recommended to be $235.5 million. With the recommended adoption of the fiscal year 2023 operating budget, the general fund reserve level would remain above the minimum reserve level of two months set by the city council. The minimum reserve level is projected to be maintained until fiscal year 2026, assuming current forecast assumptions. And future budget changes due to outcomes from ongoing labor negotiations may change the timeline for reaching the minimum reserve level. Staff recommends that the previously approved funded programs for fiscal year, from fiscal year 2022 be approved to continue in fiscal year 2023. These programs include Staffing Fire Engine 95, a pilot restorative justice program, and library and recreation programs. This includes nine positions in fire, three positions in library, and four positions in recreation for a total of 16 full-time equivalent positions that were approved in fiscal year 2022, as well as the continuation of the contracts for the Body Warning Patrol Vehicle Camera Program and the Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team Pilot Program. Continuing to fund all programs would result in budgeted Measure Q expenditures totaling just less than $4.7 million in fiscal year 2023. Of the $235.5 million citywide expenditure budget request, $17.7 million is proposed to fund capital projects in fiscal year 2023. There are 51 proposed projects, 11 of which are to be funded by general CIP funds, which will utilize $2.95 million from the remaining available balance in fund 33. Two of the general CIP-funded projects will be partially funded by a previously approved grant. The remaining projects will utilize enterprise funds, gas tax funds, developer fees, public facility fees, and grants. The detail of the recommended citywide operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2023 have been provided. Please note, approved budget amounts for fiscal year 2022 do not reflect salary savings from vacant or frozen positions that are accounted for in the budget, such as the unfilled senior management analyst position in the city manager's office. That position is expected to generate $250,000 in salary savings for fiscal year 2022. A breakdown of the proposed capital projects for fiscal year 2023 has also been provided. And staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution by roll call vote for the comprehensive operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2023. a resolution by roll call vote for the comprehensive operating and capital budgets for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin. I'll open up for comments from my colleagues, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, and Director Nevin for going over what we are approving this evening. You know, one, one question I do have is, and we, we have a one-year budget to date, and the reason why you're saying we're doing approving a one-year budget, it's because we are monitoring basically our revenues due to COVID. Is that correct? And or, I mean, usually we have a two-year budget, but this time we're only approving a one-year budget because of us monitoring our revenues that is incoming.
That is correct, and we do anticipate that with respect to our second-largest revenue source, sales taxes, that general sales tax revenue, not including Measure Q, revenue will be maintain the previous historical high, which was achieved in fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Staff anticipates that with continued increases to sales tax revenue that we would recommend a two-year budget cycle again for next, just for next fiscal year and then a year after.
Okay, so thank you. So it's basically a precautionary measure just for one year, and as we proceed, we'll move back into kind of a two-year cycle as far as like approving our budgets moving forward. With that, also, I guess the question I have is, how often would we, I know we have a mid-year review of the budget. Would we have, since, you know, given unfortunate circumstances of COVID, would we be able to have a more closer review on a quarterly basis just to see how, you know, we're doing in regards to sales tax and then also potential revenue? I know that you, as from our last meeting, we actually get all of kind of the property tax allocations towards the end of the year. But in regards to anything around sales tax, would we be able to get that on a quarterly basis?
I think coming back to the council on a quarterly basis is a, is a very good idea, and I think that we could talk about sales tax revenue and where that's trending and also other types of revenue sources updates, if it's not related to property tax, but also once we have more information related to next year's projected property taxes as well, we can bring that back to the council, too.
Well, I really appreciate that, Director Nevin. I think that if, once we get close to kind of understanding our financials, I, I don't, I wouldn't want us to be too far off, and so with your hard work and dedication, I appreciate that moving forward. Also, with regards to your report, I think it's, I'm thrilled to hear that this budget cycle has the personnel for Engine ninety-five. You know, I think that's really an important feat, and also that I know that we need that in order for the engine to run, and many of community members out there really, really wanted this back, and I know it's a hard, hard work with everyone in order to do that and to see that this will ensure that it has full staffing is quite incredible for this budget. So that, that always puts a smile on my face to have Engine ninety-five back. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Nevin, for the detailed information that you sent us. It was very, very informative. I believe when you were listing some of the, the things, I think, I believe it was under Measure Q items that are part of the budget, part of the beginning of what you were speaking about, when you mentioned in Engine ninety-five and something else that's budgeted for this particular one year. Is that, is that my understanding?
That's correct. So the, the Measure Q programming that was approved by the council in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two is, is recommended to be continued into fiscal year two thousand twenty.
Are the same, same things that were listed for before?
The same programs.
The same exact programs, okay. And then let me ask you this. Under the Pilot Restorative Justice Program was allocated five hundred thousand, and if we needed that money, for instance, for a new clinician that's inside the PD for mental health, would we be able to use those funds for a mental health clinician? Because I know it's allocated for something, but if they would like, because I think that there might be a need for a mental health clinician, another one.
I would say that all funds are at council discretion.
Okay, so we'd be, we'd be able to come back and look at that in case, because it seems like that, um, that she's doing a great job, but she may need some help at some point. Okay, just wanted to make sure that we would be able to take that money, because it's in the general fund, correct?
It is in the general fund, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I believe when you move forward and you were speaking of were the frozen positions, and you were mentioning, would you please clarify something with the, you said frozen positions as something at the city manager's office, would you mind clarifying that for me, please?
Yes, in the backup information that was, was provided in attachments, it shows the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and also the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three for comparison purposes. The note in the staff report is to make a note that what is not reflected in the two thousand twenty-two budget number are current savings that are being realized in this year's budget. And that was what that note was referring to in terms of salary savings from vacant or frozen positions citywide.
Okay, so it's not that we're adding any positions, it's just that that number reflects of the, the current status of, of a lot of the frozen positions.
The, the, the actual expenditure amounts from fiscal year two thousand twenty-two would reflect the salary savings. In terms of the, the documents that were provided as attachments, it is comparing budget from twenty-two to budget twenty-three. And we just wanted to make note that what's not reflected in those twenty-two numbers are current salary savings.
Okay, just so, because we're trying to, like, like you said, and we appreciate you moving forward with us with a quarter fashion. So with all, I know it's all evolving, because we're gonna, that bill failed, thank goodness, about the, we know that we're gonna get our vehicle license fees. So we all have to wait and watch and see what, how it goes, and I do appreciate that as well. At the last council meeting, I believe I asked a question, and I think that the needs of each department and things such as, I don't know if it'd be included, like, if there's a power specialist, I think I just gave that as an example, not to negate Waste Waters Department or any other department. That's the one that stuck out on my head, because I knew we only have one specialist, and that we have, that currently, hopefully not, that they're bringing in two people that are not, you have to be certified. And I just wanted to make sure that we bring in certified people to work on certain things. Yeah. So that's, that's my thing. So I want to find out that we are going to be replacing those kind of people, Mr. Nevin?
Replacing positions as they become vacant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so that money stays there, and we're able to get a specialist in there and not having to have another employee come in and having to do a job that's not theirs, not certified, especially for power. That's the only thing I make sure. That's probably a little more than the finance.
To that specific question, sure, that might be better.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Director Nevin, you're supposed to know it all, right?
I know.
All the questions, but thank you for your time, and as long as we know that we can allocate the money whenever it's needed. Because I do think the, as the, when the mayor brought forth that, when we brought forth the mental health initiative, and just to note for my council, that even our Daily City Partnership, they have case managers, they really don't have social workers. And that's something that we need to keep in mind, and it's great to have caseworkers, but it's much needed at our Daily City Partnership to also have social workers. So we can look at that as we move forward to provide more resources for the community for mental health. So thank you very much. Thank you, Director Nevin. It was a lot of work, which is one of the best ones I've seen detailed. So thank you and your staff. I think Anthony's on here, so thank you, Anthony. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Devon, thank you for your report. I have a couple of questions, basically a confirmation of trends. We'll first start out with Measure Q. It was my understanding on the Measure Q that is anticipated that we were supposed to bring in close to six point five million dollars as a result of sales tax revenue. Remaining optimistic and given the post-demic issues now, is it okay to say that we will most likely surpass the six point five million anticipated revenue that we're bringing in?
For fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, the fiscal year that we're, we're still in, another month left in that, we did increase at mid-year the projected Measure Q revenue to just over seven million dollars. And that's currently in the, in the budget for this fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two.
Got it. So next year, even though we're only looking at a one-year budget, when we get updates, hopefully sooner than later, it will reflect the additional revenue. In other words, we'll be up to date or we'll receive the information. Is that correct?
Well, it, with respect to Measure Q revenue, as you, as you referenced, we are proposing to budget nine point one six one million dollars in Measure Q revenue for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. If, again, at mid-year, that estimate is off either too high or too low, we will come back to you and request a mid-year adjustment.
Outstanding. That's basically what I wanted to hear. And just for the public to understand, in regard to Engine ninety-five, we expended two point seven million of Measure Q funds, and it's my understanding that these are ongoing funds for staffing and at least, if not more, at least two point seven will be taken out the following year for maintaining Engine ninety-five. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and do we have an estimated expenditure for the body cams that police uses? I know the initial outgoing expense was three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Do we have an actual number or estimate as to, to maintain that equipment? How much that will be, or will you be providing that at a later time?
I could, I can provide that at a later time, but we, we are implementing that program, and that program is being implemented starting in last fiscal year, sorry, the current fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two, and will continue into next year as well.
Yeah, that I understand, but I'm sure it will not be to the tune of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Is that correct?
In terms of the, in terms of just fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, Councilmember?
Yes, you, you know, again, it was outgoing expenses, the initial purchase, but now we're talking about warranty and maintenance. It would not be the same as three hundred and eighty-six thousand is what I'm asking. It may be much lower.
It, it, we're, we're projecting our budget for twenty-three at only three hundred and three thousand. Our, our actuals for twenty-two are a little bit lower than what was budgeted, so we are budgeting some of those funds in fiscal year twenty-three as well. But if we increase anything over and above what council's already approved, we'll come and ask for authority to do so.
Great, thank you so much. And last, if we can have more information on salary savings thus far, I know you've alluded to it already, but actual numbers would be great for the next year budget. I would appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple more. Director Nevin, thank you for your expertise. Along those lines, do we have, how many of our departments are under-budgeted? Are there any other than I know for sure that our police department, because they're so low in number of that we have, I know that, do we take that money when we're that low? Do we just keep it in the general fund? Or we just freeze those positions up to maybe eighty or, because we only, I believe we have fifty cops, fifty police? And it's so low that all those not thirty positions or what have you, what happens to that money?
There, well, in terms of the, the FTE, just to answer that part of it, the, there are no current frozen police officer positions, and police officers are being, the police department is actively recruiting police officers at this time. We, we do know that we started fiscal year two thousand twenty-two this year at a much higher vacancy rate than what we're ending the fiscal, this year at. So that has improved, and we anticipate continued salary savings, not, not necessarily on purpose, but just due to people retiring and other things. So, but those positions are authorized to be filled as they become vacant.
Okay, got it. And then, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize, go ahead.
No, no worries. But yeah, until that time, those monies are just set, so we have, we have access to that as we go along and grow the department again.
So we do, and the, the budget has not been decreased just because one fiscal year or multiple fiscal years have been lower than budgeted. So we are still budgeting the level that the departments have authority for. What happens if there are salary savings in a given year is that, for example, just with respect to the general fund, last year's budget deficit in fiscal twenty-one ended at seven point seven million dollar deficit. Without some of the salary savings we had experienced in that year, the deficit would have been much larger. This year, again, at the end of the fiscal year, we anticipate having a deficit smaller than what we started the year at in terms of budget, so those salary savings go towards helping the reserve level at the end of a fiscal year. But we do not reduce the budget going into the next year just because there have been salary savings in, in one fiscal year.
Got, yeah, understood. Thank you very much. And then, according to this, so there isn't, I just want to make sure that, that each department will have enough for their services, that they won't be under-budgeted. So we don't have any other department that's in that type of situation that are really, I know that we need to retain and even in the wastewater area, because I know that we train people, and then sometimes they leave to go to higher positions in other cities. So I'm just trying to figure out how we keep a balance and retain our employees and the, the ones that are taking the places of the ones that retire, if you know what I'm saying, to make sure that, that they don't go latterly to other cities and that we do the training, and then that's it. That's all. But I guess we're gonna be working on that.
There, we're definitely working on that. In terms of anecdotally, there aren't many other departments that are, I guess, have the same story as the police department in terms of being able to fill all of their positions. Most other departments are having, I would say, an easier time filling the positions that have become vacant.
Yeah, so, so to all the departments, I just wasn't trying to pick out one or the other. You know, I'm just trying to think of a whole thing for succession, because, um, I remember when the city manager alluded and told us that this would be the year, I remember when she gave us that, of people retiring or what have you, and then, yes, I have to look at the whole picture, but I know that we're in a crisis mode with our PD as well, but that is not due to normal circumstances. I understand that. So thank you, Director Nevin. Appreciate it. And to your staff. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni. Councilmember Justin Manalo. Thank you Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this was something I also asked for in the last meeting that we had, that it would be helpful. I appreciate the comprehensive budget that you provided. But even on a more granular level would be helpful to see kind of where the changes are in regards to departments and just line items would be helpful. I, just moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Justin Manalo, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Something kind of slipped by me, but I just thought I'd get it out and ask the question. I'm definitely concerned about the past couple of years where we've been operating in a structural deficit. However, thanks to our city manager and the finance director, we were able to find some funds. So, Mr. Nevin, this question is for you. Based upon the budget estimates that you have provided, did we, or did you take into account that we are not, I mean, we're taking a conservative approach, but we are not, what's the right word for it? We are not asking for something that is not already in place. What I mean to say is, to put it bluntly, if there is a position like, say, for supervisor, and we are not saying we need two more supervisors due to retirement or basically, the budget numbers reflect the staffing that is currently in place now. So, basically, there's no duplicates or redundancy or upstepping a requested budget item for a position that does not exist.
That is correct, Councilmember. We receive authority from this council for position by position. And if we increase that, we'll ask for the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin. That's basically the answer I wanted to remind everyone and I wanted to hear. And kudos to you and the city manager who have specifically scrutinized every single budget item so that it reflects truly as to what's needed. And basically, what you've given us is exactly what is needed at a minimum. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions from my colleagues? I just wanted to say thank you to Director Nevin, Shauna, the whole staff that was able to put this budget together. I know it's not an easy task to do. Thank you for being pragmatic. Thank you for being practical. And moving to just, you know, staying with this one-year budget, but hopefully our financial forecast and our financial health will improve in the years to come. And so with that, can I get a motion to recommend the adoption of the budget?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Justin Manalo. Miss City Clerk, if you can please conduct our roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Going down to public appearances and oral communication, I'll hand this over to Leila.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear a name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak, and you may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on in compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. And it looks like we only have one hand raised, and this is a call-in user. Please press star six to unmute.
Yeah, so just want to go over a couple of things. My name is actually John. I don't know if you haven't heard of me. First name John, last name Daly. And I've been going through a lot of stuff with you guys and looking at the budget, and it's way too much funding for the police department, not enough for mental health. I know our brethren down in Texas would really appreciate it if we afforded more budget towards mental health. In the meantime, we still have to deal with the things at hand. And I don't know who that is sitting in front of my seal, the seal of Daily City, but he is undeserving of doing so. He's an absolute disgrace, absolute embarrassment to the entire city and to the SFPD. So, get him out of there. You can leave anytime you want, as far as I'm concerned. Okay. Number two, Maltby, get Maltby out of there. I'll take over the responsibility. Somebody can fulfill those shoes easily, but I think this is an absolute disgrace. A disgrace to the city, to the county, to the state, to the community. No community input on the budget. You guys pass these budgets, and it's for the police. It's about the police and not about the community. I can't stress this enough. You really don't care. And quite frankly, we really don't care about you. You know, to me, the badge is a lot, the seal of Daily City, the seal of San Francisco is a lot, and the oath, the oath to the community. And, you know, we've seen so many times in this past couple of weeks how the community has come together based on community leaders. Matt, Camilla, Vibes and Smiles, all those guys, they're there for the community. You guys aren't. You can leave anytime you want. The door is always open. So, feel free to do so. We need to do better, and we can't do better. Okay? Anyone who want to step up and, I don't know where Ray is at. I don't even see Ray on there either. So, anytime you guys want to leave, feel free to do so. Leave your keys at the door. Get the hell out of my city as far as I'm concerned.
That concludes public comment.
Yeah, Leila. Moving on to appointments, board commission, membership committee appointments. Do I have any appointments for this time? Okay, seeing none. Move over to council committee reports. The council committee reports. Seeing none. We'll move over to city council reports. Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last time, one of the greatest things that happened is that we finally had our Habitat for Humanity in the Bay Shore. And they had a ribbon cutting. It was fabulous to see. They had already moved in. So, they were really excited. They got their key. There were different types of families. We need more of that. And the positive energy and knowing that they have a roof over their head, the stories were very heartwarming. Some of them had thought they were going to be even leaving the Bay Area when they finally became persistent. And they found out they were going to have a roof over their head. So, they never gave up. That was one of the stories, very persistent. And now have a roof, a home that they can call their own. The children talked about them having their own rooms now, where they didn't have that before. They know that they're not going to be displaced. And I would love for us to have more projects like that. I don't know what we can, how we can put it together, but I know that they're willing to do so as well, Habitat for Humanity. So, that was also great. And then recently, we all know that we had the wonderful flag ceremony for the Independence Filipino Independence Day from Spain. And I thought this year was especially great because it was filled full of community. There were just, not just community members, but it had a lot of, we were able to come upstairs and socialize. And the council general had his wife in their office. And I thought it was especially poignant that when everybody spoke, that we gave a little bit about the history as well as our mayor alluded to, given his educational background and stance on human rights. I applaud him and thinking that we also feel the same. And we did so with good intent. And hopefully that things will get better and that we want the best for the indigenous people, for the people of the Philippines. Many of them have struggled and they have family here. So, that line may be long across the ocean, but it's actually relatively short because the bond is so close. So, I know that others would like to speak on that, but I found it rather, it was rather good. And to let people know a little more about the history, the official day, and I think each time we have it, maybe just telling people a little bit more about the story, which is wonderful. So, thank you very much, Mayor. And I know, I'm sure you have a lot to say about it. And you gave a great speech. I have to applaud you for it. Thank you. And back, now you have it up for humanity. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo that, you know, the Habitat for Humanity event was really something special, most especially since it's a home ownership model. For those that don't know how that works, and, you know, I am so grateful that many years ago was able to participate in helping build the condos right there on Mission. So that a longtime childhood friend of mine, who grew up in Daily City, was able to remain and raise her three children here. This is what Habitat for Humanity does, really build the opportunity to have generational wealth so that there are more opportunities for their children. And that also house multi-generational families. You know, and it's something really beautiful to see come to fruition. I want to thank the staff members that put in some work for those homes over the pandemic and gratitude because they look really beautiful on the corner over there. It was at the Bay Shore Elementary School, at the Bay Shore School. And so, it was really wonderful to overlook the project and see it while the event was happening. And so, yes, if there's any possibilities for more, I know that Daily City with the hard work of Lanell and Sobel have been partnering to find more of these opportunities, home ownership models, that I think is pretty phenomenal. And then also, on Memorial Day,
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, a day of remembrance at the War Memorial would post 8750 in Daily City. Know that you are also there, Councilmember D. Giovanni. It was just a wonderful time to just hear. Honestly, I got to speak to one of the veterans that shared his story. And, you know, they, at the end, you know, he was going to drop off the wreath to his, at that time, he was in his twenties. And unfortunately, his cousin passed away at the age of twenty. And so, he laid the wreath for him. And so, I say that it's a time to be together, and that's why it was wonderful. But of course, a very solemn moment to pay tribute to those who paved the way for our justice and freedom. But that's what I am grateful for, to be able to talk story with the veterans and hear firsthand from them. And I know that it's even hard for them to talk about it. But at that time, to hear, you know, those stories that are sometimes really difficult to talk about and remember how he found out over the radio that, is that my cousin on the radio? Is it really him? Or is it someone that has the same name? And so, I want to say thank you to the fire department and also the DCPD for also commemorating and honoring those heroes and heroines that day. Mr. Mayor, thank you also for leading the way and doing the pride flag raising with the progress flag on June 1st. It was just really nice to be able to be in person. I think that's it. You know, being in person with these events, not having to have it so limited to just us and to be in community. On June 6th, there was a vigil here for the Ovalde Children and Victims. And once again, thank you Mayor Dos Magual for allowing my request from the community to have this. I'd like to give kudos to Fernando, a young man that initiated the vigil to honor the lives that were lost. And it was also just, it was a hard time to have to reflect on small children not being able to live their lives throughout. But thank you to the staff and your leadership that were able to have space in place to honor their lives, especially that it was on gun violence Awareness Day. So, and also, it's been busy. The Philippine flag raising that was talked about, Mr. Mayor, as I said before, we are so blessed to have an educator and a mayor both at the same time. It's just amazing. And so, thank you for those words. It was really well-attended and just wonderful to see PBRC as well. Tita Perla, Tita Dory, Tita Dory there. And then being able to, in any Filipino event, eat together, right? And so, that was, that was very nice. And Vice Mayor as well in your attendance. I will continue with the Filipino Bar Association of Northern California. I got to go to their installation. And also, with City Attorney Rose Zimmerman, I was able to see her there and learn the fact that she was actually also a past president. So, and then on Saturday, I'm almost done. On Saturday, I had a little time to make sure I don't forget anything today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time. On Saturday, Pacific Islanders Together hosted their prayer. And Pacific Islanders Day at the County Fair. It was such a beautiful day to see all the cultural dances and music. I want to thank you, Reyna Mayfuwa, and also Commissioner Teresa Faukua for welcoming me with open arms. That was just a wonderful event and always so lively. And last but not least, I am so excited to see that a program called Youth Empowerment Entrepreneurship and Employment, YEE, will be coming to Daily City with a youth workforce development program that is so needed, so needed in our community. I know Mayor Dos Magual, you will be keynoting for the class and the students. This is something that I think will be extremely beneficial so that students have an opportunity firsthand to have. so that students have an opportunity firsthand to have experiences around mentorships and jobs. And I feel like these are the types of opportunities that our young people need. Having their first job, whether it's in a small business, whether it's working at a city hall, whether it's understanding, you know, how, you know, starting your own business entrepreneurship. These are those types of experiences that can help mold and shape the direction of our young people. And so I just want to say thank you to also the staff for hosting it here. And hopefully, it continues to grow. I'm excited that our young people have this opportunity. And that is it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time.
Of course. Now, thank you, Councilmember Justin Manala. Been busy. Vice Mayor Ray Wunitura.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to follow up on thanking PBRC and especially Tita Perla and President Dory Panisa for basically, you know, hosting and providing the meals for and coordinating the Philam flag raising. I also want to thank again and acknowledge Supervisor Canapa for starting that tradition in Daly City. And so I'm really glad to see we are continuing it on and doing it every year. And Mayor Rod, you did a great job and a very inspirational speech, and I can't say thank you enough for that. Also want to say that I want to acknowledge Joy Gutierrez-Pilarre and Dr. Audrey Pittman, who are both retiring from the Bay Shore. And they have a final board meeting on Wednesday, June fifteenth. And I hope we, you know, share together and wish them well in their retirement. And then finally, I need to say I want to express my gratitude with, to our city manager, Shauna Maltby. I'm sure most of, well, I don't know if most of the public are aware, but she has announced her retirement. And I think she has done a fantastic job over the last few years that she's been on the job. And Shauna, you are going to be extremely missed. You've really helped Daly City become what it is today. Your effect on Daly City and our government is going to be felt for years to come. And I wish you congratulations. And I know you're going to have a great life and future ahead of you in your retirement, so enjoy it. And I just want to express my gratitude publicly for everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yes, I just wanted to add a couple of things to the Memorial Day, I believe, the Councilmember Manalo. The Hector is a friend of mine, Javier, most of you know, has been my friend for 25 years. The person that she spoke with has shared a story. So he was a Vietnam veteran, and his cousin used to hide in the basement when he came back from Vietnam. So when she was speaking about his cousin being so young, I noticed he's spoken about this publicly before. And she's right, it's a very heart, because Hector himself is a Vietnam veteran. And he shared his story. And I wanted to also recognize the new commander, Commander Rakiza of the post, VFW post, and that they did their own honor guard this year and were delighted, you know, excited to do it with the PD, but they had their own honor guard themselves. So they were very proud about that with their firefighters. And Gina and our recreation and Denise, they always do an amazing job of coordinating with them. And it's always a very heartfelt, and all the recreation staff, they were really, really touched by everything. And also, when you raise the pride flag, and we had that commissioner, it's really nice to know that that commissioner lives in Daly City. It's a county commissioner for the LGBTQ, but the person lives in Daly City. And that's really, really a beautiful thing when we can have someone of our own. Not, you know, it's great to have county commissioners who also is a part of the San Mateo County. So that was really such a lovely pleasure. And you're right, Tita Perla and Dory always bring the food. So it was a beautiful, organized. When you came upstairs, it's not surprising when you come in and it's so, there's no spot left, there's food everywhere, and it's so gracious and the generosity of when people bring in and share food together. Very well done together, and I have to thank the city manager. And the Vice Mayor gave those elegant words to our great city manager, but I'm in denial. So I'm going to have to wait until I say anything, because I don't want to get all choked up yet. So, but there will be time and definitely, happy retirement to Audrey Pittman and to honorable Joy Gutierrez-Pilarre for their service to our beloved community. And I know that herself, Gutierrez-Pilarre, will continue to serve as she always has in the community in a different capacity because that's who she is, and that's who she loves, is our community. So we'll be looking forward to seeing them on Wednesday. So thank you very much just for that moment, and I'm sure there's other things, but thank you very much. And you're next, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much to my colleagues. As the public knows, we've been doing a lot of stuff out there, flag raising. Again, I thank you to Tita Perla and PPRC for providing the food. Thank you to staff for making all these different events that are happening at City Hall. I really, really appreciate it. I just want to thank all the kids that are from JUHSD and JESD that have graduated or been promoted into middle school or, you know, going to high school or going to college. It's tremendous feat. Time flies, you know? And I just want to say thank you to all the teachers and the graduates that have been able to go through this journey, and it's not been easy for a lot of students, especially students that had to go back online back about a year ago, when they had to go online learning, coming back, still in the middle of the pandemic, and also the teachers and staff that had to go through all that stuff and continue to work and try to provide a sense of community and long-lasting relationships with their students. And just want to thank everyone for guiding these young people to the next level in their education journey.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you're an educator too.
To Amiana, and congratulations on her promotion to high school.
Definitely. Time flies. I'm like, to me, I think she's still my baby forever, so. Yeah, and so moving on, is there any other council committee? Seeing none, we'll proceed to staff reports, item number eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything, but since Vice Mayor announced, and it's not a secret, I have to say thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here till November first, so I, and I plan to be dedicated to the very end. So much to say, I won't, I won't do it right now because we still have time. But it's been an honor and a journey of a lifetime. And I love Daly City community, and I still plan to be involved. But I do very much look forward to be with my family, my mom. She's eighty-one, and she's my best friend, and I look forward to just dropping by her house and saying hi whenever I want. Working in nonprofit a little bit, and I do have a background in gerontology, so I want to connect with the aging population. So sticking kind of close to local government, but not at this level. But I know that I will bring all of my experiences, the good and the bad, mostly good, with me and try to do some positive in the world. So thank you for the acknowledgement. I'm still here.
Thank you, Shauna. All right, so moving to adjournments. I guess we have one here. Let me find my list. We have, I want to close in memory for Elizabeth Penas Guzman, who's a Public Works Department custodian, Carmelito Guzman's mother. And I want to provide a moment of silence. All right, beginning adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks. In the meantime, stay safe, be healthy, be around loved ones. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.